Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'd like to call the February 17th, 2020 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke. John Boucher.
Here.
Barbara Scoler.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Colli Petro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
Here.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on February 3rd, 2020. Motion would be in order for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Scoler, seconded by Alderman Cola di Pietro. Questions or comments in regards to the approval of the minutes of the February 3rd, 2020 Crest Hill City Council Meeting? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You also have before you the minutes of the work session that was held on February 10th, 2020. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cola di Pietro, seconded by Alderman Gazal for approval of the minutes of the work session held on February 10th, 2020. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, as far as our business promotion tonight, we are honored to have a special guest in the audience who will be giving some opening remarks. As everyone knows, 2020 is a census year. It only happens every 10 years for municipalities. I can tell you it's very important for the municipalities to get an accurate head count of all their residents within the city which you reside. It brings us money and it is important to every municipality throughout the state of Illinois. So, the city of Crest Hill joined with the Spanish Community Center approximately about six, eight months ago, and with the city of Joliet for the hard-to-count individuals within the city of Crest Hill. And we are honored to have here tonight our campaign director from Census 2020 and the, from the Spanish Community Center, Ms. Vernice Alvarez. Vernice, please take all the time you need. This is a very important topic for the residents of the city of Crest Hill. So take your time and please explain everything thoroughly. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for having me tonight. First of all, I want to, you know, have this be an open discussion as well, so feel free to interrupt. If you have any questions along the way, please do let me know and I'll stop and be sure to answer as best as I can. So, I'm with the Spanish Community Center and my full-time job is to do everything census, right? So I'm the campaign director for the We Count 2020, Todos Contamos. It's a bilingual campaign and our goal is to reach the hard-to-count tracts that are in the Joliet area and in Crest Hill. And as many of you may know, Crest Hill is considered one of the hardest-to-count regions in the entire nation. And this is because there was a low participation rate 10 years ago in the 2010 census. And so, this year, the Spanish Community Center received funding from the state of Illinois through the Secretary of State and the Department of Health Services to do outreach in the community, to inform the community about the census, what it's all about, and also to provide assistance to the community that may not be able to have internet access or may need translation services as well. And so, this is a once-in-a-decade opportunity for our communities to be seen and counted. In order for our communities to get the resources that we need, we need to make sure that they're hearing the most persuasive messages from the right people through accessible platforms. That means you. So all of you here have that, you're the trusted messengers of the community. You are the ones that know your community the best. This message, if it comes from trusted partners, people are more willing to listen and have that conversation. Because there is that fear, there is confusion about the census, what it's for, especially in the immigrant community. And we see a lot of that in, especially in the Joliet area, which is where I'm from, where I may engage in conversation with a person about the census and they may respond with, "Oh, I don't think I'll fill out the census" because they might share my information with Immigration Department, right, through ICE. And so, we need to inform them that the census information that they provide is confidential and it's just for the purposes of getting a count of how many people are living in that area. And that's how we receive federal funding, that's how our state gets funding, and that money trickles down to Will County as well. Who knows the number or the amount of money that's at stake if we haven't under-count this year?
Over a thousand a person.
Over a thousand a person, yes. Yes. So it is over a thousand a person. For each person that's not counted, that's about $1,500 less for our community. In Will County alone, it's a little bit over $220 million per year. So let that sink in, $220 million per year for Will County alone for the next 10 years. And so, we can do the math, right? It's, it's a lot of money that's at stake. And that data was taken from census, previous census information and responses 10 years ago. And why we're doing this campaign is so that we are here to form partnerships with local organizations, with local elected officials, with nonprofits, churches. As many people as we can partner with, the better, because that way, more people are sharing the message, more people are educating our community about the importance of this census. And not only that, but there are also two congressional seats that are on the line for the state of Illinois. That means less representation in Congress, right? And so, we want to make sure that that story doesn't repeat itself since 10 years ago, we did lose a congressional seat. This time around, it's two congressional seats. And so, we want to make sure that not only is it about the money, but it's also about representation. And so, our message is to include everyone and to share the information that we have from our trusted partners. That being like the Census Bureau has a lot of great information on their website, they have flyers. We have partnered with national partners like Naleo and the Illinois Coalition for Immigrant and Refugee Rights. And they are all working together with the state of Illinois, with the coalition, to provide resources, funding opportunities, and also encourage everyone to participate in this 2020 census. So, again, if, if there are any questions, feel free to reach out to me. I'd be more than happy to, to answer any questions. I'm also available to give like a short presentation. I always give like about a 30-minute presentation about the census and I could talk about it for hours and hours. And so, yes, question?
If you look at Crest Hill map, you, you realize that our word is the lowest because we have a lot of immigrants in my area. And I've been trying to announce all this and that's the fear that they have. It's immigration because a lot of them are either on green card or they're illegal and how we can help them.
For the community that has that fear, especially those who may be undocumented, we want to share the information that it's under Title 13 law, that that information is confidential, that it cannot be shared with any government agency other than, you know, the President of the United States gets that final count in, in December of 2020. And all he gets is like a statistic or she, right? They get a number. And so, that personal data is not going to be accessible to anyone else, it's just for census purposes. And usually when you bring up the confidentiality, it might ease some of that fear. But, again, you want to also make it relevant to the community. Why should they care about the census? Why should they respond? And, and it's because this funding is used for school funding, like school lunches. Like a lot of the immigrant community might, you know, be using that, that service in schools. It's also for our fire, police, for redistricting as well. And so, some of the schools might be overpopulated and that, that data that the schools and the superintendents and school districts use is from the Census Bureau. And so, again, if you connect it to a service or something that's funded through census data, they're more willing to, you know, like, "Oh, I didn't know it was that important or that it actually applied to me." And so, it's great to have this conversation and to, you know, also inform yourself. There's a lot of information out there. Unfortunately, there's misinformation as well. And if you do notice that, or you are aware that someone's sharing information that's not accurate, there is a census rumors page that you can report. Census information that's not collected includes social security numbers, citizenship status, credit card numbers. So if you or the community see or hear that someone's asking for that information, we want to make sure that we report it to the right authorities because, again, it's, it's important and we want to make sure that we provide the resources needed in case there are any questions or misunderstandings or confusions as well.
Because obviously, our goal as elected official, we want the money. So, we do have an employee here that's bilingual that's trying to do this. So, I told, I'm willing to go in my area and talk to them just probably they feel more comfortable. As elected official, do we need to take any classes or do we need to have any special information about it?
Well, most of the information you can find online. So on this 2020census.gov page, you will find a lot of toolkits for outreach. So information like flyers and even short videos on what's, what the census is and what it's for and how it will affect us not only as a nation but as a state as well. There are many organizations that have partnered to, to create, to create this coalition. This is statewide coalition and so we are working in partnership with those from the state so that we share the same message and that there's no confusion or misinformation. There are trainings and webinars that are available as well, so if you're interested, I can also share those links.
Can you tell everybody when it's going to start and will they all be wearing those shirts or some kind of identification?
Yes, so. I'm actually from the Spanish Community Center. I don't work for the Census Bureau. I did 10 years ago, so I know a lot of what the operations is like and enumeration process. So, through the Spanish Community Center, one of our biggest projects is to go canvassing. And so, starting this week or by the end of this week, we will be in the neighborhoods to answer questions or share some information to our residents that they may have about the census and why it's important. And also to provide questionnaire assistance. There are a lot of homes in the area that don't have internet access. And so, we're partnering with the local libraries, some churches and some other, the, the city of Crest Hill is one of the locations where people can come in and, and respond to the form online. And that invitation will be sent in the mail on March 12th. So March 12th will be the day that every single resident in the United States will receive this invitation letter. And if it's not March 12th, it's the following days of March 12th, they'll be sending them in waves. And that will be the first time that people can actually respond online. So this will be the year that you can respond either online, by phone, or the traditional way, which is by mail. And again, if people don't respond, then they will send someone, the US Census Bureau will send an enumerator to, to help the resident complete the survey.
And can you, just to piggyback on Alderman Cola di Pietro, Vernice, those shirts, can you go into maybe the badges? Because people are skeptical sometimes of people coming to the door afraid to answer the door.
Yes.
So can you kind of walk everybody through that for the people that are watching on television for us?
Yes, so, us through, volunteers from the Spanish Community Center will be wearing this blue t-shirt that says We Count, Todos Contamos, 2020, and underneath it says Joliet Area and Crest Hill. And they also will be wearing a name tag with a We Count logo. We don't want to cause confusion because I know that the US Census Bureau will be sending out enumerators and so we will be stopping as soon as they start their enumeration process. Our purpose is to encourage the residents to respond and to provide information if they have any questions. Our volunteers have been trained and we actually did hire lead canvassers as well to, to lead a group of volunteers. And so, everyone will be wearing this blue t-shirt and they will be visible. Most likely, it'll, they'll be outside canvassing like after like work hours because it's when people are home and on weekends. And, again, we're there to answer questions and provide questionnaire assistance at the Spanish Community Center. And other partnering organizations will also be providing a computer with signage so that people can come in and respond online.
And is there a phone number if people need to contact you if they have any questions or anything like that?
Yes, so probably the best way would be through email and I will be happy to share that with you all. And the Spanish Community Center number would be the best way to, to reach us as well.
Okay.
And what is the deadline, when this ends?
So, the US Census Bureau has this, the actual official census day is April 1st. And that has always been the day, April 1st is census day. And it's a mark of when, that determines when people will be counted. Some like tricky situations might be like, well, someone's pregnant and their baby isn't born on April 1st, right? By April 1st. Does that mean that I count the baby or do I not count the baby? And that means, no, if the baby's not born on April 1st, we don't count them. We'll have to wait till the next decennial census. And so, that's just kind of more of a mark for the US Census Bureau. But people are encouraged to start responding by March 12th, just to kind of get ahead of, of the date. And if you, you're still able to respond after April 1st, I think up until maybe like June, July would be like the very latest. You can self-respond. If you wait until that very end, like around June, July, then there's a higher probability that someone from the Census Bureau will come visit you. And if you just want to avoid that situation, you don't want someone coming to your home, then just self-respond online, right? Or by phone. And so, again, we're here to support our residents. We're very lucky to have this partnership with the city of Crest Hill, so we're very grateful that they have been there since the very beginning because we want to make sure that we really get out the count and we count every single person at the right place at the right time.
And one of the hardest places to count in the city of Crest Hill is the Stateville Penitentiary. And that's what it was in 2010 also. So, and, and again, that is on the radar screen for us this year.
Yes.
Because I, I still feel we were undercounted in 2010, especially out of the penitentiary. So we have done a lot of work here. I have to give you kudos for your organization. I know that myself, Heather and Megan has been to many meetings. You like to have a lot of meetings.
Yes, we do.
Yes, you do. But I will tell you that they are always informative and with the large group of people that are in that room from all different walks of life, you get a lot of ideas that you can bring back and try to implement in your own municipality.
Yes, and all, it can be as, something as simple as just having a conversation with someone about the census is a way of helping. Again, you can share with your constituents, with your neighbors. If you go to a church, please do share with, with whoever's a leader in that organization and provide that information also like online. If you have the option to provide like a basic FAQ about the census or add a link to the website, that would also be very helpful. We, we have multiple ways that you can do outreach as well, whether it's providing a space for us to, to fill out the forms or hosting us for an event, or if you have a meeting, I'd be happy to attend or have someone from the Census Bureau actually attend and also give a little 101 about, about the census as well.
And I'd just like to jump in there for any neighborhood association meetings for counting. That, that we would definitely love to have that, that partnership as well.
And you still are looking for census takers, correct? And it's $25 an hour, correct?
Yes, so the US Census Bureau is still currently hiring. Now, the, the, the positions that are most needed are for the, the managing or administrative side of the census. I think for enumerators, it's still, they're still hiring and they're currently calling people to, to begin their training. And for Will County, it starts at 25 an hour. And that was raised from 19 the hour. So, they, they really saw that there was a need for people to work here and to go out for enumerating and so they raised the, the pay rate to 25 an hour.
Okay. If you'd like to give out their phone number for the Spanish Community Center and also the.
Yes, I don't, I don't know if I remember, but let me grab it.
Okay. The email address also, we can certainly put that up on our website also.
Yes, so my email address is V E R E N I S E at SpanishCenter.org. And our phone number is, oh, one second. Are there any questions so far?
Anybody else?
Are you doing any kind of program with the schools?
Yes, so actually, we are partnering with local school leaders and school districts to share census information and flyers. I know some of the local districts have been really proactive about sharing information to the students and to parents. The actual Census Bureau has a program called Statistics in Schools, which ranges from, for kids, zero to all the way to high school. And it's a way to get children and students involved with the census and also learn a little bit more about statistics and how it applies to everyday life. And it's created by teachers, for teachers, and so that's a resource that's available for schools. And the Census Bureau is actually sending like a package of information to every single school district in, in the entire nation. But we still want to be there as a support in case there are any immediate questions or if there are any questions about our local campaign and how it affects Will County, we are here to also provide those resources.
I know children are just really good about bringing that kind of information home to them. Especially, it's, no, I mean, when there's a language barrier, especially, I know when I was in real estate, a majority of the time with, with Spanish-speaking families, the children would translate. They were so cute, you know, they would translate for the parents when they couldn't speak. And we always gave them candy when they were done, they were so excited. But they're really good at that, you know, and so I think that's a good avenue to tap, the children.
Yes, and, and that's a very good point that you make because for many that, especially in the immigrant communities, the children are the ones who are translating these documents. They are the ones who read the mail. I was one of them, I'm first generation Latina, my parents were immigrants and, and you know, they, they became citizens. But even then, language was still a barrier for them. And so, I was the one who had to translate these letters. And so, we want to also create flyers that are also for children, right? That has those basic facts. And so, when they come home, they're excited to share with their parents what they learned for, for the day. And not only that, but also educating their own parents about what the census is.
Vernice, I found the phone number if you want me to.
Oh, great, well, I have it too. Okay, go, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry. So our phone number is 815-727-3683.
Anybody else? Questions or comments? Well, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, I am impressed, you are, you are very energetic and you are very good at what you do.
Thank you.
And you know a lot of information about the census.
I'm a former teacher, so I'm all about, you know, talking to people and, you know, I'm all about census and, and education in general. So I'm happy to, to be here to share some knowledge and hopefully you learned something new today.
And I'm sure you're going to have more meetings and you are always welcome here if you'd like to come back in March or April when it's really going to get a lot, a lot of activity.
Yes.
So if you want to come back and, and if you have anything else to say, we can certainly have you here again.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You have a good night, thanks. All right, moving on with the agenda. Our city administrator, Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one agenda item for consideration this evening. This was discussed at the February 10th work session. That is a resolution authorizing the termination of an HVAC construction contract between the city of Crest Hill and Cyril Reagan Heating. And this is specifically for cause as discussed. The contractor, despite saying that they did comply with Section 2.04090 of the city of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances, which requires an active apprenticeship program, they do not, we became aware of it and at that time, we moved to terminate the contract. We will move forward with going with a contractor that does have those requirements. So we will bring that forward to council once we get through that process as well. But in the interim, we are asking for approval to terminate that contract for cause.
So moved, second.
Scott and Tina? Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Oberlin. Questions or comments in regards to the motion for a resolution authorizing the termination of an HVAC construction contract between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Cyril Reagan Heating Incorporated for cause? Roll call, please.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number is 1063.
Thank you, that was the only item I had for approval this evening. The report is on file and I'd be happy to answer any questions this evening.
Questions of city administrator? Thank you, Heather. Moving on to our Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Tom Meggs. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just one item on the agenda this evening as discussed at the last work session. We're seeking approval to enter into an agreement with Concentric Integration for a sum of $54,100 to upgrade the virtual servers that run the water wastewater system, SCADA system.
Motion would be in order?
So moved, second.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal for a SCADA software upgrade. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, that's all we have on the agenda this evening. Happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
Any questions at Public Works? Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Community Development Department, our Community Development Director, Scott McMaster. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, nothing this evening, but I'll answer any questions.
Questions of Community Development? Thanks, Scott. Our Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything on the agenda this evening. My report is in your packet and I will entertain any questions.
Questions of the Police Chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor's report. Mayor does not have any agenda items either. I will be happy to answer any questions. Hearing none, we'll move on to the City Clerk's report. Our City Clerk, Vicki Hackney. Good evening, Vick.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no items on the agenda either this evening, but would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of City Clerk? Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Our City Treasurer's report. Our Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, and I've got agenda items. Today, I just want to inform you of our regular overtime payroll from January 20th, 2020 through February 2nd of 2020 in the amount of $226,384.99. I seek your approval on our list of bills, which in that time period totaled $672,184.61.
So moved, just presented.
Thank you.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Scoler for the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Excuse me. Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, I'll try to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Questions of City Treasurer?
Thank you, good night.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have nothing on the agenda. Anybody? New business, we have nothing on the agenda, anybody?
Me. Recently, been informed by both the chief and myself that Alderman Albert has taken offense to a proposal for neighborhood watch post. Myself, as an official physician, I was contacted by a group of resident to provide direction to create a neighborhood watch for W2. As a responsible alderwoman, I contacted the chief of police to bring the wishes of the group forward as a liaison, now as an alderman or W2. I just wanted to clarify myself here. I know my boundaries. I know what I can do, what I cannot do. The chief and I have been working together our word for many things, even when he was deputy. The question that I have here, are we, can the chief still use the chamber for city business or not? What? I'm sorry? Can the police still use the chamber for city business or not for committee, committee outreach? All of the chamber on here? Yes, yes.
The, the council chambers.
Why, why wouldn't they?
Why wouldn't they?
Apparently, I was told not to, so, I mean, if not to, that's fine, we'll go do it somewhere else, we'll do it in my house, we'll do it anywhere. I'm not going to stop from helping the resident. If I offended anyone with my post, I apologize, I'm a big girl, I can take it, but I don't think we should give our chief this hard time to do his job, and I'm doing my job as elected official. This was for Ward Two. If people choose to come to it from other wards, we have no problem. This is open to anyone, to Alderman, just like, it's no different when we do Let's Meet at the Park, which Alderman attended to it, the mayor's attend to it. I'm not sure what is the problem here. I don't want to stop in the chief's way of doing his job. Again, if I offended anyone, I apologize, but I took directions from our deputy Rosati and from our chief. I don't think we did anything or we harmed anyone by doing a meeting. Again, I'm the liaison, this is not my meeting, but also, I'm a resident, so am I attending meeting, am I not? Barb may attend the meeting, may not. But again, I'm still waiting for an answer, and no one is answering. Are we allowed to use the chamber? Can the chief use the chamber? If not, where does he supposed to operate his business for the residents? Mayor?
I think that's what this building is for, isn't it? For the residents?
That was my understanding, in the past, we've done many meetings. Have we or not, Ed? When we had problems on Borden, when we had problems in Hurst Street?
Yeah, I've had meetings with people in the past, yeah.
So, I don't understand where all this coming from.
There have been several meetings that have been held here in the chamber with the chief, several, very many of them, actually.
What was the, I'm very confused.
I posted something on social media because I was the liaison between the chief and the residents.
Okay.
And apparently, the Alderman took it offensive that I overstepped my boundary. I haven't, I didn't post as an Alderwoman, I posted as a Crest Hill police hosting this meeting for the resident, because we have some residents that they're on several groups. So, we're just trying to reach out to Ward Two residents. If I misspelled the word Ward Two, I apologize, I will go on and I will put Ward Two. Again, I cannot control what people, who they want to tag, or who they want to invite to that, I don't control people, I can only control myself. My job is to reach out to the committee and help the committee, I have been doing this from day one I was elected. Lately, I'm more compassionate about what I do, yes, I am, because social media, it helps you to connect with people. So, that's what we're doing. If the resident have concern about all the breaking ends and all the problems that we have, and they want to create a Neighborhood Watch, that was Ed's goal, that was our goal to add when we sat with him, to work with the committee. He's been doing amazing job working with the committee. You know, does we need improvement as a study? Of course we do, we always do, we always have room for improvement, but why we making his job difficult by not allowing him to use the chamber? Again, this means it's got to go on if you guys allow us here or not. My house is open, just bring chairs or sit on the floor. If you want me to use my house for stuff like that, I'm going to have to.
So, is your request, Alderwoman, to use the council chamber?
It's not my request, Mayor, I'm not the one hosting this event. I'm the liaison between the residents, and I have screenshot of the conversations between the residents and myself, so I can prove that to anyone down here in this room that wants to see it. This is not my event, this is not Barb's event, we might attend, we might not, okay?
Your request was, could you still use the council chambers?
Can, yes, because...
I'm trying to word it correctly.
No, my question is, can our police chief still use the chamber for city business?
What'd they do, I mean, they had these meetings in the past.
Yes, we have.
I mean, even other wards, I mean, we, they fell by the wayside now, but we, at one time, where I live, we, the signs are still there, but nobody does anything anymore. Where did you hold the meetings before?
I, in my experience, I'm not certain because of the fact that it has fallen by the wayside.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
It's very citizen...
Why, why?
I would tell you, when I ran Neighborhood Watch from 1993 to about 1999 in Ward One, the meetings were not at city council chambers. They were at Church Hall in St. Anne's, or they were at the library.
So, you have a policy for that, Mayor? Maybe we should create a policy so we can, so our chief can understand what is his job? It's not his job to sit and calls and make phone calls from me to you to her, meeting. I mean, he has more important things and more critical things in the city to worry about than what he can do his job. Again, chief, if you're not allowed to do it here, you're welcome to come to my house next Wednesday, everyone, you're all invited, I'm speaking as a resident.
So, I will ask the question to city council, does anyone have any objections of having a Neighborhood Ward Two meeting here at city council chambers? Speak now.
No, it's for the, I don't understand what the problem is, is there a problem? I don't get this, I'm very confused.
We let homeowners association use your council room, we don't complain about that.
I mean, is it really an issue?
No, I think there was a little bit of a misunderstanding as far as what the purpose and how the meeting originated. So, from our staff level, I think my understanding is this is the chief hosting a meeting with some residents, so as far as I'm aware, that this would be our policy going forward, that staff does use this council chambers for meetings between staff and residents. And I think there was a misunderstanding about what the purpose of that meeting was.
Okay, seems like you're okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief, you're okay, so, thank you.
Anybody else on their new business? Committee Liaison reports positive city council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents?
Wait, what about committee liaison? You skipped right over that.
Didn't I say committee liaison?
Well, yeah, but then, before I could say anything, you're talking to the next one. I just want to let everybody know very quickly that the annual Ledece ceremony will be held Sunday, June 7th at 11:00 a.m. Just got word from the consulate, Sunday, June 7th at 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, committee liaison reports? Council comments? Positive city council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents?
I'd just like to say that we're all up here to help the citizens, and I just think anything we can do to help the citizens, we should try to do, and that's part of our goal, is to help the citizens. And when they're upset about crime, I think, you know, unfortunately, I think they tend to fall by the wayside like they always do, but still, the intent is always good, so, you know, you give it your best.
Alderman Colli-Pietro?
Everybody get counted this year, please.
Word four, Alderman Albert.
Yeah, Mayor, just to announce that the, you know, thanks spring, the Lions Club Easter egg hunt is on Saturday, April 11th at 12:00 p.m. noon at Richland School. The Easter egg hunt is open to any kids, newborn to eight years old.
Alderman Kubal?
Nothing additional from Ward Four.
Ward One, Alderman Dyke?
Nothing at this time, there.
Alderman Frichet?
Nothing at this time.
Ward Two, Alderman Sclaire?
Just wanted to tell everyone to remember to vote, early voting is now open.
Alderwoman Gazal?
No comments, me.
Public comment? Anyone like to address city council, need to step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional, we have Peggy coming up tonight. Welcome back, it's been a long time.
Thank you, thank you. Peggy Grandal from Joliet, just have something I want to share with you, I'm a little rusty on my public speaking, so bear with me. It was about three years ago that this council made a well-informed decision to pass a humane ordinance for your residents, and once again, we thank you for that. Morgan and I are here today to share some disturbing information. House Bill 4105 was introduced a few weeks ago by Margot McDermott, State Representative for the 37th Congressional District. The intent of the bill is being portrayed as a means to come down hard on puppy mills and commercial breeders by proposing enhanced standards of care. And while the bill looks to do that on the surface, the actual intent of the bill is to erase local control and therefore nullify all humane residence, humane ordinances passed in Illinois to date, including Crest Hills. This bill was crafted solely by the pet industry and their lobbyists. The bill has nothing to do with the humane treatment of animals. The standards of care in the bill cannot be enforced with out-of-state breeders where the majority of the puppies are coming from. For example, King Neptune's Pet World over on Sherwood has gotten weekly deliveries from Jack's Puppies in Iowa, one of the largest puppy brokers in the country for years. This bill is useless as the vast majority of the puppies come from breeders outside of Illinois. The Illinois Department of Ag is expected to release new standards of care in the coming weeks, where 90% of what's in this bill would be taken care of by those new standards and enforced by the Illinois Department of Agriculture. But the real purpose of the bill, in Section 3.10, cleverly reworded, is preemption. It discusses preemption, all in fact to sell more puppies and kittens, more sick animals, more predatory lending, and more defrauded consumers and heartbroken families. I'll have the verbiage that I'm going to email to all of you, as well as a copy of the bill, so it's a little more clear, it's about that long and it talks in circles, but clearly, it's preemption and taking away the rights of communities like yourselves to provide humane ordinances. Unfortunately, it's obvious by Representative McDermott's actions that she is uninformed, as so many people are when it comes to the reality of the pet industry. I did reach out to her and receive no response, and I'm going to share with you a portion of what I sent to her. I'm so incredibly disappointed in your introduction and sponsorship of HB 4105. I can't help but wonder if this is what your legacy will be as an elected official, for supporting a bill that's main intent is to preempt home rule, cleverly reworded, of course, striking down existing humane ordinances and pulling the rights of communities away from them. I can't imagine why you would want to take that away from folks like yourself, elected by the people, essentially telling all of them they've made a bad decision. You do know that that's the intention of the bill, right? I'm respectfully asking the question. This is nothing about making the world any better for commercially bred animals or to help the public find the best match for their family. This is about pet stores making sales, and that's why it's nicknamed the Pet Land Bill. I always consider the motivations of people that are trying to get me to support something. I believe that people do need to have a choice when purchasing a pet companion, preservationist breeders, easily located with just a little bit of research and by word of mouth, or adopting from a rescue or a shelter. Please think about people like me that are opposing what you've proposed. We have zero money in this game, not a cent, the money means nothing to us. We are just trying to do what's right for the animals. I hope that you'll reconsider and think just for a minute about those communities that had multiple meetings, countless hours of research by staff to be able to quote factual data about the industry and agreeing with the will of the people. This must stop. I try to speak professionally, and I always try to consider all angles, but all I can say to you honestly is that you are being used by the pet industry. It's all about nothing, it's all about money, and nothing about making a better world for animals or for those people that you were elected to represent. Please reconsider, and feel free to reach out to me, I'm happy to help offer education and perspective. That is what I came here to share with you. It's very upsetting to us that have worked hard for humane ordinances, this is a ploy by the industry. You can all do your own independent research on that, but what we're asking folks to do is to reach out to Representative McDermott, let her know how you feel. I don't know her personally, and this is not a personal attack on her, but what we're seeing is the fact that either she's uneducated or she does believe in the pet industry. And 14 cities, municipalities and state of Illinois have humane ordinances, Kankakee County has one, and right now, we have a bill down in Springfield that's heading to a committee meeting on Thursday, that's the outright ban of the retail sale of commercially bred puppies and kittens in Illinois. Right now, the industry is hitting us hard because they can see that we're making progress across the country. So, I come here to ask you as a city if you'd be willing to consider a resolution opposing this particular piece of legislation. I'm asking all of you to reach out if you could independently, share with your networks if you do believe in this cause, and I do believe that most of you do. What we're worried about is if a bill goes like this goes through, all I can say is you may end up with another puppy in the window. It could very easily happen. So, I'll be happy, like I said, tonight I'll email you a copy of the bill along with the contact information, and we're just hoping that you, Morgan and I wanted to come here out of a courtesy for what you did, because this is kind, unless you're on social media a lot, this is kind of on the download, you're not going to see this on the 10 o'clock news.
Right.
This is stuff where we want to bring it to you because you did something pretty darn brave and went forward, and I hate to see it stripped away because then we're just back to square one and it's all about the money. It's not about public choice, it's about money.
And I will say, Peggy, that I was unaware of this House bill that's out there right now, but I did hear you say home rule in the verbiage, and we are not home rule, was that included also?
Right, well, actually, the verbiage in the bill does not state home rule or anything, it says anyone, any community, so you would be affected. Lyle is also not home rule, and they've enacted an ordinance, so it's still going to affect you, the way, it was written for a reason.
Okay.
Because we also are working at Lombard right now, which is not home rule, they currently have two stores and one that's an unincorporated Lombard, that they are working towards options to see what they can do, and we've told them about Crest Hill. Lyle probably mirrors their situation better than Crest Hills does, because Lyle has had some issues with pet stores in the past, too, but they tried to work through zoning, there's things they're doing, but ultimately, they create an ordinance, and the verbiage, very well-written, and you have to read it two or three times, and you'll kind of do that puppy head tilt when you read it, but that's what it is, it's preemption.
Okay, well, we will take that under advisement and probably have it at a future work session in regards to the resolution. Fair enough, and please send us the information here.
Absolutely, absolutely, and if there's pertinent updates to this, we'll let you know. Hopefully, we're going to hope to shoot this down quick and not have it lag on, I mean, obviously, things move slow in Springfield to a certain extent, but we only have a few months, so.
Right.
I'll let you know what's going on, and we'll keep you posted, and thanks for the time tonight.
Okay.
Well, I think not only contacting her, but all of our representatives and speaking out against it, I think we need to contact all of them.
Absolutely, and what I will include in the email to you is the current bill that we have down there, the current proposal for the statewide ban, that we're looking for cosponsors. So, we're asking everyone to reach out to their senate side, so we have that, and we need you to reach out on the House side to ask to please oppose this. Right now, Senator McDermott's the only one, the first cosponsor has already pulled out, but it's still going to committee, so, you know, it's going to get there eventually, we're hoping it doesn't, but it's probably going to go to the Ag Committee, which is not a good place for it to land, but we're going to fight it with all we've got, we didn't come this far to turn around and say that's okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address city council? Jim?
I'll be, please.
Okay.
Thank you very much. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Jim Posey, I'm with Republic Services. I've introduced myself to a couple of you for the first time tonight, others I've met at the previous mayor's Christmas parties and that, so, I just want to take this time to say thank you for your partnership with Republic Services. We enjoy, you know, servicing the community of Crest Hill. You've all got my business card, so if there's anything that you need, if the resident calls you and needs to get in touch with us, please reach out to us and we'll get it taken care of. We look forward to working with the community to continue our partnership. So, if there's any questions, if you guys need anything, by all means, don't be afraid,